We ready to start?
We are ready to start, yes.
All right, good morning, welcome to the 270th meeting of the Program Management Committee for the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, the record will reflect that we have Trustee Wilson present in the room and trustees, Nick Zissin, Evans, Kistner, and Wabi present online.
All right, we have committee minutes from our August 5th, 2025 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there are no comments by the chair, so we have our Engineering Department Agenda items.
All right, good morning, trustees. Welcome back from the holiday. Number of items this morning, our first six items are CSO Green Infrastructure Grants. So I'll run through these with so many online, if you do have questions, be sure and speak up so I can answer any of your questions. The first item is a CSO Volume Reduction Green Infrastructure for 2000 North Broadway Apartments. This will enter into agreement with 2000 North Partners LLC. The purpose of project is to reduce combined sewer overflows to the Mississippi River for the long-term control plan. In the consent decree, this project will reduce the volume of water to the CS Combined Sewer System with the installation of permeable pavements. The total cost of the project is $122,400, and that was the request for reimbursement for the project. In your packet is an exhibit. This particular project is located in the North Riverfront area. Next item is a green infrastructure for Albion West End Residential Building. It will authorize to enter into agreement with AK St. Louis Owner LLC. This will reduce flows to the Combined Sewer System with the installation of two bioretention basins. The total cost of the project is $160,200, and they are requesting reimbursement for that full amount. This particular project is located in the central west end area. The next item is a green infrastructure grant for Loyola Academy. Will be entering into an agreement with Loyola Academy. The project will reduce runoff with the installation of one bioretention basin. The cost to that bioretention basin is $28,123, and that is the request for reimbursement, $28,123. This particular project is located in the midtown area. Next item is a green infrastructure grant for soccer field improvements. It entered into agreement with Spencer Development LLC, again to reduce overflows to the Mississippi River. Project will reduce runoff with the installation of turf underground detention. This project is estimated at $35,000, and that is what's being requested at this time. This project is located in the Tower Grove, Manchester area. And then finally, the next green infrastructure grant is for the University City Annex in Trinity. We will be entering into agreement with the city of University City. This particular project will reduce combined sewer overflows to the upper river-to-pair watershed combined sewer system. This project will reduce runoff volume with the installation of one bioretention basin. The total cost of the project is $110,460, and the city of University City is requesting the full amount for the grant. This particular project is located in the Delmar Loop area. Are there any questions on the grants? I know I went through them pretty quickly. All right, the next item is the El Toro Wet Weather Storage Facility. This action will appropriate additional funds and authorize staff to amend a current design contract. This ordinance authorized the district to amend a contract with KAI 360 for the construction phase services of the El Toro Wet Weather Storage Tank. The purpose of this project is to construct a wet weather storage facility to alleviate sanitary sewer surcharging and building backups during wet weather events. KAI 360 will provide advisory services during design and construction once the design-build selection is completed, and we'll be discussing this project later on the agenda. These advisory services include reviewing the design-build progress to ensure the project stays on schedule and within budget. The total construction for this project is estimated at $25 million. KAI 360 is currently has 45.37 participation, minority and women participation at this time on this project. The next item is the pump stations and ORS GATA PLC and network upgrades for the Bissell Watershed and the county water pump stations. This appropriates funds and authorized staff to amend the design contract with CDM Smith for design of pump stations and ORS GATA within the Bissell and county watersheds. This project consists of the design and preparation of construction documents for multiple pump station network upgrades. The design contract consists of two GATA PLC upgrade projects. The purpose of project is to replace aging instrumentation, communication, controls equipment with modern technology and provide upgrade for the existing systems. The construction cost estimate for all these projects is $18,200,000 with construction anticipated to begin in fiscal year 2027. CDM Smith is committed to just over 33% participation on this project, and they're currently sitting at 33.76%. All right, the following item are three construction projects for this fiscal or for this month. First one is the El Toro Wet Weather Storage Facility. This action will appropriate funds and authorize staff to enter a design-build contract. The work to be done consists of the designing and constructing of a 3 million gallon underground storage and diversion structure, a submersible wet weather pumping station, and adjoining valve vault along with site work and appurtenances. The purpose of this project is to reduce building backups and relieve overcharged sanitary sewers. At this time, I'm going to have Brad Navoy provide a brief presentation on our selection. It was a design build selection, discuss the design bid proposals received, and then it'll come back to me and I'll discuss the MWB participation. Brad?
Good morning, trustees. As Rich mentioned, the purpose of the El Toro project is to help control flow in the downstream sewer during weather events. It stores the flow and then meters it out slowly. We wanted to talk about the procurement process that was used. We've used this in the past, but it is different than our normal procurement process. So we did design build. It's an alternative delivery process to the design bid build that you normally see. Design build provides advantages on certain projects, and this one in particular. Next slide, please, Ashley. This one in particular, controlling the flow downstream can be challenging, and you need to look at the whole project together. That's why we use design build on this. We have certain restrictions that regulate when and how we use design build. We actually have a Missouri law specific to MSD, and then there's also the general law that governs design build for everyone throughout the state. We have several internal rules that we've set up to control how we use design build. Those are listed there. And as you can see with the graphic, the difference between design bid build and design build, traditionally, we bring you projects where we hire a designer, they design the project, and then we put it out to bid as a complete bid package. Design build's different, and then we start with a smaller scope or a 30% design. We put it out, and there's one team that includes both the designer and the builder, and they put a proposal together, and we select based on that proposal for them to complete the design and build the project. Next slide, please. So we start out with an RFQ. This is very similar to the quality-based selection that we use for design services. So we start with a request for qualifications. We go through those qualifications, and we shortlist the certain number of firms that we want to take into the next phase of the process. We submit, we put out a request for proposal to those teams, and generally, that includes a 10% to 30% design. Gives the detailed project requirements, and it also stipulates the stipend that the unsuccessful bidders will receive. Proposals are submitted, and this has our typical MWBE and workforce requirements. We score those proposals, and then we move forward with the successful proposer. Next slide, please. So the proposals are broken into two phases, the first phase being the technical proposals. Those are scored, and those scores are published, and then we open the price proposal in the following days thereafter. The price proposals are then scored based on their value, and the two numbers are put together. We then bring the highest scoring proposal based on the technical and the price to the board for consideration. Design process is very collaborative throughout the process. They work with our construction and our operations staff to help further the design to make sure we're getting the product that we want. They also work with our construction management division throughout construction and through commissioning with our operations so they know what they're getting when they take over the facility. Next slide, please. So the basis of selection is there's both the quality aspect and the cost aspect. So the quality aspect deals with the technical proposal, and for this particular project, that was 40% of the overall scoring. And then the cost, the cost in this particular selection was 60%. We also have MWBE and workforce that's similar that we do on design and construction. Next slide, please. So after the technical scoring, you can see that Goodwin Brothers received 100%, Albarisi received 91%, and KCI received 76% based on the technical scoring. We score the technical, and then we modify it so it uses the entire amount of the scoring, in this case, 40 points of the scoring. Next slide, please. Then we scored the technical, it's shown, I'm sorry, the price, which is shown here in green, based on the price. KCI was the lowest price, and they received 100%, Albarisi 91%, and Goodwin 88% on their price. Next slide, please. This shows the actual prices that were submitted. As you can see, the lowest price was from KCI, and the highest price actually was from Goodwin. But their total score, Goodwin received 93%, Albarisi 91%, and KCI 90%. So very close scoring when you add the technical to the price. Next slide, please. So we wanted to talk today, this is our seventh design build selection that we've done. All but one of these has been 40% technical, 60% price. You may recall on our big FBI project, we did both 50% technical and 50% price. On this particular selection, this is the first time we've received that the project with the proposal with the lowest price did not receive the highest score, and that was probably due to all the scores being very close. The agenda item that we're bringing today enters into a contract with Goodwin Brothers Construction. They had the highest overall score, and they've built a very similar previous storage facility in the same community several years back. It appropriates an initial $15 million, and we have a planned supplemental of $11 million in fiscal year 27. The initial appropriation also includes $25,000 stipend for each of the unsuccessful proposers. Is there any questions about this agenda item?
I don't have a question. I was gonna just note the $25,000 stipend that's built into it. Is there any concern that at some point, a bidder could sort of phone it in just to get the $25,000, or is that a illogical question?
So, no, that's a good question. The proposal documents say if they phone it in, so to speak, we can throw out their proposal and they don't receive the stipend.
Got it. Good safeguard.
All right, I'll cover it.
Could I?
Go ahead.
Could I ask?
Trustee Wabi.
Yeah, in the past, so you said this is our seventh design build project that we've done. What's the past experience in terms of, you know, budget, just overall success of those projects?
I think they've all been very successful. We typically only use this on projects that have a highly technical nature to them. We've used it extensively on the flood wall rehab of the pump stations where those are difficult because you almost have to take the pump station apart to see what you actually have to do. The contractors really have an advantage over the designers in that scenario. This project in particular here is challenging because you have to build a facility knowing how much flow you can store and how you can meter it out. It's a little more challenging to do that until you get into the actual construction.
But so, so our, in the past, though, we've been, when you say we've been relatively successful using design build as approach to, you know, a hard bid, what, what can you point to that are, that would support that, your position that we're?
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't have a specific, but I can tell you the collaboration on the flood wall pumping stations, the previous, I call it the twin to this El Toro project, Kingsland Storage that was built in the same community, just the collaboration. Rich talked about we're using, utilizing KAI here as our owner's representative. It delivers that package. So when they take over the storage facility, operations has a leg up because they've worked with the designer and the contractor on how the facility needs to be run.
And then what about the, what about any savings that from our overall projected budget on this project? How are those, I mean, I'm assuming that there's incentives for the winning team to provide, you know, savings back to us?
Yeah, that opportunity definitely exists. If we, if during the design where we're collaborating with them, if they come back, you know, with an alternative that is acceptable to us and the contractor, then we share in those savings. And we have seen that, we've actually seen it with the FBI with, as we got into the design, there were some advantages to, and again, it's a different project, but paralleling the two plants where we're doing two separate projects. On this particular project, you know, there could be, again, you're starting from scratch. That's one of the advantages of the design build. There's a site, and they're starting from scratch, and then with three different proposals, they all take a little bit of different look of how they want to actually reach the end goal to store that flow. And, you know, there's advantages of the configuration, the piping, things like that, particularly with how we're going to maintain it in the future, and that was that collaboration Brad was talking about.
Yeah, I would add, I was just gonna add that during the selection process, we have both engineering and operations folks involved, and I think that's a, that's a big benefit because on a project like this, operations people are looking more at how they're going to operate this and how the controls are going to work, how we're going to divert flow, how they can do maintenance along the way. So it's a different perspective than possibly the designers would only bring.
Thank you.
Thank you, very good questions. All right, on the MWB for this, as Brad indicated, same requirements for our design and construction. We had a 10% minority and 10% women goal for the construction portion of the project. Goodwin Brothers bringing almost 24% MWB participation. The design had a 31% combined MWBE goal, and the design team is bringing 31.41% participation. And I did fail to mention earlier, and we didn't have it in the presentation, the designer for Goodwin Brothers is Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly is their engineering prime for the design on this project. And as Brad indicated, the team of Goodwin and Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly had delivered a similar, smaller storage facility over the past few years, so, and it was very successful, so.
Ashley, you want to go back to the agenda items?
Any questions? All right, the next two items are projects we bid this past month. First one, the Harlem Baden Relief Phase Four Darver to 69th Street Trunk Sewer. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff into entering the construction contract. The work consists of approximately 7,700 linear feet of pipe sewers, 6 to 48 inch in diameter. This project is one of three design packages in the Harlem Baden Relief System. The construction is the fifth phase of a multi-phase improvement project. The purpose of this project is to reduce building backups and alleviate wet weather surcharging and overland flooding in our combined sewer system. We received four bids on this. The low bid was from JH Barra Construction. The bid was below our design estimate, and our appropriation, which includes just over $1 million for utility relocation, is just above the two-year planned budget for the project. This is a partial funding request for this fiscal year, $4 million. There'll be additional 4.1 appropriated in fiscal year 27 for a total of $8.1 million for the project. JH Barra is committed to 20.11 minority and women participation to meet the 10% minority and 10% women goal. The next item is the South County Relief Pump Station Improvements. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of the rehabilitation of existing triplex sanitary pumping station with new pumps, motors, piping, valves, and electrical communication equipment, and the replacement of existing generator and installation of approximately 288 linear feet of 96-inch diameter storage sewer. The purpose of this project is to rehabilitate an existing pump station, which has exceeded its useful life, and the upgrade of the pump station will increase its capacity to a design, a 10-year design level. The district received three bids on this project. The low bid was from Keely Construction Group. The bid was above our design estimate by about $1 million, and our appropriation of 4.7 million is also above the planned budget. We did poll the contractors to kind of take a look at our estimate based on their bids, and it became apparent that the contractors were going to take a lot more time in the construction of this, which would require additional bypass pumping, and basically, you're keeping the pump station up and running while you're rebuilding the whole thing, and the amount of time to do that was estimated longer. So that's an additional cost that our designer did not take into consideration. So that's the reason for that difference. As far as MWB participation, Keely's committed to 20% MWB participation, which meets our 10% minority and 10% women goal. All right, our next two items are appropriating infrastructure repaired dollars for the next, for fiscal year 2026. The first one's infrastructure repair for facility work. This appropriates funds for infrastructure repair projects that we bid through our purchasing division. The work consists of construction of needed repair, replacement, or improvement projects to address needs at our facilities, such as treatment plants, pump station, and other district headquarters. This appropriation of $3 million to continue implementation of this infrastructure repair program. As we identify projects, they're designed primarily with internal forces and bid through our purchasing division. You don't have this in your packet, but just kind of wanted to cover a few of the projects that we are doing right now out of that funding that are currently in design or construction. One is Missouri River Access Bridge Improvements. That's some improvements at a bridge to our Missouri River Treatment Plant. That's a project estimated about $500,000. We're going to be doing some improvements to the HVAC system here at the market facility. So those projects are in the works, that project, and it's approximately $350,000. And then finally, we're strategically replacing the man lifts at our many 200-plus pump stations around the district. So that's multiple projects, and that's estimated at approximately $831 million for that project. So just wanted to provide a few, a listing of projects that get funded with those dollars. The next item is infrastructure repair.
Can I just ask a question about that? And you may have explained it, and I missed it, but what makes, you know, general maintenance in some cases done through this kind of bid or appropriations process as compared to just, you know, sort of day in, day out operations?
If it doesn't include like a total replacement of a facility where would be considered capital improvement, where we'd build a whole new pumping station such as that? such as that typically it's replacing existing equipment or, or making repairs. Where in this case, we're making, just making repairs on the bridge, we're not totally replacing it. If we were totally replacing the bridge, then it would, it would be a capital improvement. Here we're improving some of the abutments adjacent to it. I'm trying to think of the third project. The third projects are the man lifts. It's just a small portion. There's man lifts at these stations. It's, it's rehabilitating the equipment around that. I would use it say as such as we had to do improvements to our elevators here. That's typically in our operating budget, but these are dollars that, that we utilize these dollars rather than have it in the operating budget.
Okay, thanks.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. All right, next is the dollars for infrastructure repairs on the wastewater system. This is appropriates action in infrastructure repair, replacement or construction projects. Again, these are bid through purchasing are part of our small sewer program. The work consists of the repair, replacement or construction of manhole sewers or other infrastructure identified. Engineering departments at various locations throughout the district. This is part of our ongoing, what we refer to our C B O M, which is our maintenance and operation program, which is required by the consent decree. It also makes repairs, what we call acute defects repairs. These are repairs in the consent decree requires us to have these done in a, in a year to avoid causing backups or overflows. Our appropriation for this is approximately $8 million. And I'll kind of give a breakdown of that in a second. Is the continued implementation of our small repair program. Projects are identified by our operations group and then we hire contractors through our purchasing division. Kind of some statistics of the dollars appropriation here is $8 million. So we have larger projects which are over the 50,000 threshold for the small sewer work. We have approximately 14 of those types of projects. So once a month, there's a project that exceeds that 14. Plans are prepared by our in-house design group and we bid those through purchasing and those repairs are made. Generally, those are deeper, smaller, deeper projects where we have to do a replacement. It doesn't, it hasn't raised itself to the level of an emergency. And then we have the under 50, under $50,000 project, which we utilize a small sewer program. So just some statistics, actually I gave these statistics when we appropriated the stormwater dollars for the past six months for the small contractor program. Expended about a million dollars. 5% of the dollars went to minority contractors, 16% went to women. So a total of about 21% went to minority of women contractors on, with regard to the dollars. With regard to the projects, about 11% of 65 projects went to minority. And then 15%, so a total of 36% of the projects went to minority and women contractors. And again, a number of these contractors also bid. Once they've proven and pre-qualified with us, then they go on to do the majority of them to work on projects we bid through the capital program or through purchasing that are under the 500,000. So we've had quite a few graduate from that program. All right, the next item is a reimbursement, O M C I reimbursement for the city of Frontenac. This ordinance will authorize the district to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city, city of Frontenac for eligible stormwater expenditures where the revenue is collected within the Deer Creek O M C I. Eligible stormwater expenditures include storm sewer and inlet construction, drainage improvements, stream bank stabilization and erosion control projects, clearing under bridges or cleaning detention basins, stormwater planning or engineering costs and other stormwater related expenses deemed appropriate by the district. The city of Frontenac is utilizing this funding for a project called Countryside Lane Storm Improvements. This is a multi-year project, so this is not the first request for dollars. They're completing the construction to prevent flooding several homes along Countryside subdivision. The total estimated project cost is 2.7 million. This reimbursement of grant funding is $134,174. All right, the next item is the Arc Flash Hazard Analysis Services. This will authorize the district to enter into a professional service agreement for general arc flash services to support MSD's electrical safety programs within the treatment plants and pump stations. This provides operations department with electrical studies on various sites and location. Excuse me, is determined by operations personnel. Such electrical studies shall include arc flash hazard analysis and short circuit studies. The ordinance authorized the district to enter into this professional agreement with Coltrane. There were two other proposals considered on the project. Coltrane's proposal was the highest rated by the evaluation committee. The proposed agreement will be for one year with the option of three year, extension years based on performance. These services are paid for by the operations department operating budget and amount to approximately $200,000 annually for these services. All right, one more item here. This is the adoption of a proposed resolution to adopt the St. Louis Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. East West Gateway Council of Governments worked with school districts and local officials in the counties of Franklin, Jefferson, St. Charles, St. Louis, and the city of St. Louis and obviously MSD to prepare a regional hazard mitigation plan that supports 187 counties, local government, school districts, as well as dozens of other special districts with their planning and mitigation efforts. Local governments must formally adopt this plan by resolution, which is what we're here today for, in order to be eligible to apply for and receive hazard mitigation assistance grants from FEMA as a sub consultant to CIMA. And several grant programs exist such as pre-disaster mitigation and flood mitigation assistance. The 2025 plan identifies mitigation action. The plan addresses range of hazards that may affect St. Louis region such as tornadoes, severe thunderstorms, severe winter weather, flooding, levy, damage, dam failure and earthquakes. MSD's participation in this plan focuses on the flood mitigation and grant funding. Just to give you some examples, we have used this pre-mitigation and post-mitigation flood grants for projects primarily on the Merrimack River. We, we had done some pre-mitigation flood protection, both the Fenton and the Grand Glaze Treatment Plants. We raised the levy at Fenton Treatment Plant and we built a flood wall, protection wall around Grand Glaze. And then there were numerous, numerous flood pumping stations in the lower Merrimack area that flooded. During the last flood event, we were able to then take these mitigation grant funds and protect our equipment. You would raise equipment, build walls, things around that. So we have utilized this funding, so being part of this overall plan is definitely a benefit to the district. Any questions on the agenda items? With that, I do have one more thing. I'd be remiss, I want to recognize Brad Navoy, who did the presentation for you today. Brad is going to retire on October 1st. He's been here for over 25 years. Brad's been instrumental in the delivery of the consent decree. I don't know that we could have done it without him. Over the last 15 years, I just wanted to take this time to thank him for his service. Not only is my assistant director, but to the district.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Brad. That is all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any other business?
No, there's not.
All right, our next tentative meeting date is September 30th, 2025, and we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll call an order the 318th meeting of the Finance Committee. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, the record will reflect that Trustee Wilson is present in the room and trustees Wybey, Kistner, Evans and Nikazessin are present online.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting?
So moved.
Second. All right, thank you. Next item is the Gatsby 6768 and actuarial, actuarial report by Milliman.
All right, we're actually gonna go a little out of order today. Bill Winningham from Milliman is still in transit, so we're gonna start with item four and then we'll fit Bill in when he, when he gets here. I talked to him, he's on his way. So Marion.
Thank you, Tim. Good morning, trustees. As you may be aware of, the district uses collection litigation attorneys to collect delinquent account balances. We exercised the final year of the existing contract.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Marion, can you, can you slow down or speak into the microphone or something? This is, I can barely hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got the microphone right up to my mouth, so I will, I will try and be louder. Does that help?
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, sorry about that. So I will start over. So the district uses collection litigation attorneys to collect delinquent account balances. We exercised the final option year of that existing contract last year. So we issued an RFP this year for those services. We received a total of three bids. Just to give you just an order of magnitude with respect to collections in FY '25, the three collection litigation firms that we used collected approximately $28 million for us. We paid them a 16% commission on those collections, which equates to about $4.4 million. As I mentioned, we received three bids again this year from the same collection firms. We are recommending that we issue awards to two of those firms. Gustoff Law Firm and the Highmost, Highmost Law Firm. The commission rate will be the same at 16%. We anticipate that those contracts will not actually start until next year as we exercise. We had a six-month option in the existing contract to extend those. And so we're gonna do that to allow us to transition some work from the third law firm to the other two. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Is there a reason we're transitioning away from the third collection firm?
Yeah, we, we have a number of things that we have in place. One that we're gonna discuss in closed session, which we believe will result in us not having to utilize three law firms. There have also been a few issues that we've encountered with that third law firm and we, we just truthfully think we can get by with two law firms at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, I'll take the next couple of items. First, we're gonna talk about an S R F ordinance that will be up for approval, intro and adoption next week. This is loan 2025B, a little bit about the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. We've actually gotten a lot of our funding for the capital plan from here, but it does provide low interest rate, fixed rate loans, as of now, these are still roughly 30% of a market rate. So there's a published rate that comes out every week, the, our rate will be set at 30% of that. The standard term are 20 years, this will be a 20-year loan. We have gone longer for the FBI project, so the state does make longer loans available on a case-by-case basis. There's a 50 per, I'm sorry, 50 basis point, half a percent annual loan administration fee. So that gets added to the interest cost. We've already submitted all the plan specifications, et cetera. So what happens then is that the state ranks the projects, publishes an intended use plan. This project met all the requirements, is on the intended use plan. We're trying to close now before the end of the state's fiscal year, which is at the end of this month. They've published a new draft plan for next year and we've got about 80 million of funding on next year's plans, which is all of the, the new debt that we plan to issue next year. So that will be all S R F next year as well. And then some loans are paired with subsidized, subsidization grants. This one is one of those. There are certain projects that they will provide some grant funding to too. It also helps lower, lower our costs. The next page is a little bit of the loan terms. We pledge our revenues just like we do for capital markets loan and they just require, the loan requires a lot of the same things that are required from our capital markets loan. We have to continuously own and operate the system. We have the same kind of covenants that our debt service, our operating revenues will meet a certain percent of our reserve requirements, debt service requirements. And then all the other ones are listed here. We have to publish an annual budget, connecting the annual, a lot of these are all things that we do regularly. The project that we're looking at on the next page, this is a public I and I reduction phase 10. So the way these are kind of structured, we do these in phases. What that allows us to do by breaking it up, one, they're, they're continuous projects. We've been doing these for many years and we'll continue to do them. But it also lets us increase that grant subsidization portion, which decreases the overall cost of doing this work. Most of this is done for cured and placed piping, so it's kind of lining pipes to fill cracks, make sure there is no leakage. This is, like I said, ongoing work. The financial terms that we expect on this loan are on the next page. This is gonna be an eight and a half million, maximum eight and a half million dollar loan with a one and a half million S R F grant, a total of 10 million of funding. The first principal payment is not due till January of 2027. It's a 20-year payback, so maturity is in January of 2046. If we were to close right now, the rate would be approximately the all-in rate 2.2%. That's about 1.7 is the 30% of the, the market rate plus the 50 basis points or half a percent. Admin fee, we're talking around 90,000 is what I estimate, cost of issuance. Total debt service, so we're getting 10 million of funding. Our total debt service is 10.6 million. Annual debt service of about $540,000 a year. The next page, I can just kind of show you what that looks like compared to if we went to the capital markets. So if we went to the capital markets, we'll start like our normal 30-year capital market loans, we'd have to borrow close to that 10 million. Usually, there is a premium portion when we go to the capital markets, because we issue at 5% coupons, which has historically been higher than market, so we get this premium to kind of offset and true up the cost to make it more of a market rate. 5% is getting pretty close to market right now, because interest rates are higher than they have been for a while. So that'd be a very small premium. So we'd be borrowing almost that entire 10 million, say 9.8-ish. Small premium, be a 30-year term. We'd have an estimated true interest cost of about 4.75%, a lot higher than the estimated cost of the SRF loan. We'd have a higher cost of issuance if we went to the capital markets, about $225,000, so we're talking almost $150,000 more. And then debt service would be significantly higher. We're talking good eight-plus million to do a 30-year loan, and that's roughly $100,000 more annually. And then if we were to go to a 20-year loan, similar story. We'd have a little bit less interest because of the shorter term and a lower interest cost, but it'd still be significantly higher cost than the SRF loan. So this is why we like to do SRF loans when we can. And then just to give you an idea of where we stand from a debt capacity or authorization standpoint, on the next page, prior to this issuance, we have roughly 450 million still remaining under the voter authorization. This will reduce that to the, you know, closer to 440, but still plenty of authorization for the next few years of capital work, which will be a mix of debt-funded and pay-go. There any questions about this loan? Like I said, there will be an item for introduction and adoption to approve the loan at next week's meeting. The interest rate will not be set until closer to closing. We have a scheduled closing date for later this month, and the rate will be set at that time. But as I said, if we were to do that today, it'd be probably in the mid-high 1/6s, close to 1.7%. All right, if there's not, yes?
I, this will say a great deal. Congratulations. Can you just quickly help me understand what the cost of issuance is? I know it's the big swing between a traditional open-market funding, but can you quickly just identify what we'll be spending the $89,000 on?
Sure, most of that, or a good, some of that goes to the state. They require a certain percentage of every loan go to them for admin. There's also, they have a lawyer. Our bond counsel gets paid as part of these funds. We have-
Who's our bond counsel on this?
It's Gilmore and Bell.
Okay.
And then we also have a municipal advisor. They get a very small payment for SRF work. They get a higher payment for capital markets work, which is part of the difference. When we go to capital markets also, the banks or the underwriter gets a payout. That does not exist with SRF, although it is kind of replaced by the admin amount that the state gets. Those are the primary pieces. Usually get an underwriting piece. The bond councils get paid for both parties, and then the municipal advisor.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, we do not have Bill in the room yet, so let's go to the operating fund portfolio, the investment portfolio that we look at every month. A few changes here as the market continues to move around, so I'll start in the upper left. Total power amounts about 13 million higher than last month, just because we've brought in more money than we have paid out at this point. Yield to maturity in our portfolio, we are starting to see interest rates on the shorter and start to drop a little bit. Our yield to maturity went down three basis points, so pretty similar to where we were. The benchmark went down 28 basis points, so almost a third of a percent. Remember, their portfolio turns over entirely every month, just a portion of ours. So just as we were slower to catch up as rates were going up, we'll be slower going down if rates continue to go down. Our weighted average maturity stayed the same, just under a year. Benchmark went down just a little bit. It was over 1.9 years. Now it's closer to 1.8. On the sector allocation, we saw a little bit of movement from commercial paper to treasury bond notes. Commercial paper is usually our shortest investments. We did get some large draws on SRF from the FBI project, and we put those funds out a little bit farther out than we have been recently, just to try to lock in some rates if rates do continue to go down. Down in the lower left in the fund summary, most of the 13 million increase in portfolios in the operations, it's about 10 and a half. The other two and a half is in construction escrow. The portfolio is really driven by the operating, because that's most of the funds, so. Then the maturity distribution, we saw a kind of opposite movement between the way our portfolio looks and the benchmark. So we saw a decrease on the zero-to-one years, about, say, 4% lower in that amount than we've had last month, whereas the benchmark went up 5%. And then in the two-to-three years, benchmark was down 3% there. We were up 5%. So we just kind of saw a shift from the zero-to-one year to the two-to-three year, and the benchmark saw that almost in reverse. They also saw a slight decrease in their one-to-two year. So they went shorter. We went a little bit longer. But overall, we're in compliance with the policy. We're continuing on an overnight basis, you know, getting over 4%. So most of our new investments are at or around 4%. When we go out a little bit longer, a year or more, we're seeing some things just under four now, which would be more indicative of what you see with the benchmark. If there are no questions on that, we still do not have the actuary, so I am gonna suggest that we move forward, closing this meeting, going to stakeholders, and then if he comes in, we can find a time to fit him in, because I would like you to hear the report on the funding status of the pension plan and some of the items that go with that.
Okay, that sounds good to me. The next meeting day tentatively is September 30, 2025. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Trustee Nikazison will get stakeholders set up.
Thank you. Good morning, and welcome to the Stakeholder Relations Committee meeting. Roll call by the chair.
All right, the record will continue to reflect that we have Trustee Wilson present in the room and Trustees Yabe Kistner-Evans and Nikazison present online.
Thank you. There are no comments by the chair. Approval of committee meeting minutes, August 5th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a presentation by Brian McGowan with operations for the semi-annual regulatory compliance report. Brian?
Hey, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Yeah, this is gonna be the semi-annual regulatory compliance report for the first half of 2025, January through June. We're gonna go over the compliance measures. Three of them, plant compliance, customer service compliance, and our collection system compliance. Okay, page three here, this is the plant compliance table. It shows all of our seven treatment plants and how they fared the first six months of the year regarding meeting their permit requirements. And as you can see, we had one violation at our Bissell treatment plant over the first six months of 2025, and all of our remaining plants, zero violations. So we've kept the streak going in the county and at Lee May, and we've made a significant improvement there at Bissell. The next, page four there. Is it not working? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Page four there, customer service compliance. That is our emergency response rate. The goal is 90% of the time to respond to emergency calls in less than four hours. And as you can see, in the first half of 2025, we were at 86%. That was due to the heavy rains we received in April. If you took the rain events out of the equation, we would have met those emergency response time 95% of the time. Next, page five there. It's the collection system compliance, maintenance-related building backups. Our goal is to have less than 210 over a semi-annually period over the first six months, and we were at 130. Next, page six there. That is our maintenance-related overflows. We refer to those as dry weather bypasses. The goal is to have less than 80 over a six-month period, and we were at 67 for the first six months of 2025. The next chart there on page seven, that's the capacity-related building backups, basically overcharged mains that we experienced during the first six months. We had 764, and again, that was due primarily to the rain events we had in April. And you can see there the amount of rainfall we received in the first six months, 25.4 inches. And just for reference, St. Louis area typically gets 34 inches annually, so we had a pretty good amount of rain in the first six months of the year. And then page eight, that just lists our total constructed sanitary overflows that are still in our system, SSOs. We had 206 when we started the consent decree. We're down to 18, so we have 18 SSOs left in the system, and we're on track to have those removed by the deadlines. Page nine there is the constructed overflow activations. So of those 18 SSOs that are still in our system, 11 of them activated over the first half of 2025. And then the last page there, that's just the scorecard. All the compliance measures are there on the left. The yellow are the ones that we didn't quite meet, which was the plant compliance and the customer response, and then the bottom two are in green there. The maintenance-related backups, we're supposed to have, our goal is to have less than one per 1,000 homes, and we are currently at .6. And then the maintenance-related overflows, the goal is to have less than two and a half per 100 miles of pipe, and so we're at 2.1 for the first half of 2025. So I went through those pretty quick. Is there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have actually two discussions by Tracy Coleman. The first regarding resolutions for MSD's group dental, medical, and vision plans, and the next is regarding an ordinance for the district's classification plan. Tracy Coleman?
Good morning, trustees. I'd like to bring your attention to Resolution 3974 for the district's group dental plan benefits renewal. This is with Cigna, and this resolution would allow us to go into the second year of the current agreement with Cigna. This due to expire on December 31st. This action authorizes MSD to enter into a one-year agreement with Cigna to provide dental coverage for the district's employees and their family members. We're looking at the annual cost of that being $1,067,000. Again, before claims, we don't know exactly what those claims will be. Are there any questions about this particular resolution, trustees? Okay, then I'll move on to the next resolution, which is for the group medical plan benefits renewal. That is Resolution 3975. It includes the medical plan and the stop-loss coverage. This is the district's second year of the current agreement with Cigna. This is also due to expire December 31st of 2025. Approval of this action will allow us to enter into our second option year with Cigna to provide the medical coverage and the stop-loss insurance that we leverage. We're looking at the average cost of that being, without knowing full claims, $14,490,000. Are there any questions about the group's Cigna medical and stop-loss insurance? Okay.
Yeah, I have a question, and this may be more broad to medical insurance in general. When you're looking at renewals of the, you know, sort of the blanket policy, do you solicit feedback from employees about, you know, their experience, service experience with the insurer?
Yes, but not necessarily. This has been our first year where we did a very proactive reach out to the employees. We formed a benefits-focused group to kind of understand what benefits people were not understanding, underutilization of those benefits or overutilization like on the dental. And so we have used that feedback to leverage changes that we're gonna be making and that we're gonna be offering in the fall.
All right, good. I think the employee feedback, and I'm thinking in particular about sort of their service experience, you know, are they, as they're interacting with Cigna, is Cigna responsive, those kinds of things?
Yeah, and we also get reports from Cigna on the customer service line that call in with the feedback calls. We're on that one. So right now, I would say Cigna's registering is fair. There were a lot of concerns because they were in middle negotiations at one point, but I do think that Cigna's offering us a quality service, which is why we continue to renew.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, if there's no questions on that, I'll go on to the group vision. So if I can bring your attention, trustees, to Resolution 3976, which is for the group vision plan benefits renewal. This is with, this is a current agreement that we have, is with national vision administrators that we refer to as NVA. This action will allow MSD to enter into a new contract with NVA to provide vision insurance for an additional year with our employees and their family members. Average cost we're looking at is $82,000. The original contract provided for initial contract would turn with one year with three years additional, so we're looking at that one-year renewal right now, and I was just seeing if there are any questions from the trustees on the vision insurance with the NVA.
I'd like a quick question on the overall health insurance. Do we ever look to- Do we ever look to combine our group with other governmental agencies, like the city or the county, and bid our policies with them?
The short answer is no, because there's that claim risk. We are looking at it for occupational med, which would help us in some ways on some more comp issues. But no, typically, right or wrong, MSD has kind of high claims. And so it's not necessarily beneficial for us to combine our insurance with someone else to try to get a group larger policy.
And, but you, but we've looked at that in the past.
We have looked at that, yes. Gallagher has walked us through that process, where the benefit shows is possibly on the occupational med, but not on the group medical.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Are there any other questions on NVA or the other medical that I mentioned? Okay, well, then now I'm going to move on away from the medical to the classification plan. So if I could bring your attentions to the introduction and adoption of ordinance 16693, which is the classification plan. There are a few title updates that need to be made. In the information technology department, they're looking to add two initial, two additional job titles, being IT specialist one for test analyst and IT specialist two test analyst. In the secretary of treasures department, we're looking to retitle a job title. Current job title is the assistant secretary treasurer. And we found that it's a little bit more marketable to come up with the assistant treasurer for that particular role. And then we're removing one position from the operations department, which is the holdicultrist. That position is no longer a title that they use. That job function has been reclassified. Are there any questions about the changes to the classification plan? Okay, trustees, well, then that finishes my presentations. Thank you.
If I may, we still do not have the actuary. I understand there were some highway issues that may be holding him up. So I could walk through some of it, but I won't be able to do the justice that he would do, because I'm not an actuary. So I'm going to recommend that we reschedule him for next month's meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, I call to order to go into closed session to discuss confidential and privileged communications between the public governmental body and its representatives and its attorneys under section 610.021.1 RSMO.
So moved.
And individually identifiable customer usage and billing records for customers of a utility operated by any political subdivision created by Article 6, Section 38 of the Constitution of Missouri under section 610.021.26 RSMO. And personal actions under section 610.021.3 RSMO also includes records related to municipal hotlines established for the reporting of abuse and wrongdoing under section 610.021.16 RSMO. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Wabi?
Aye.
Trustee Kissner?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Nick Isisson?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson? All right, we're in closed session.
Come out of closed session.
I think you're muted, trustee Nickerson.
Yeah, I think you're muted, Greg. Trustee Nickerson, can you hear me?
There he is.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. We're ready to come out of closed session.
I'd like a motion to come out of closed session. So moved.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All right, we're back in open session. Thank you.
Okay. Next tentative meeting date is Tuesday, September 30th, 2025. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Very good.